It's 5:30, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, adoption of the agenda. We have one item we'd like to add. After reports, is that okay, Kelly?
Yeah, where have you got them?
Okay. Let's add up item R. What do they call it, the photo shootout?
Hometown photo shootout, I think.
For sponsored by the League of Kansas Municipalities. Then, I'd like to move item G and H into items for commission action. And since Sean Turner needs to travel to Baxter Springs, I wondered if it'd be okay to move him up in the agenda to ride after those two.
Sure, sounds good.
Okay. Any other modifications Commissioner C?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay. And can I have a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
So moved.
Second.
You got those changes, Jennifer? Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. City license, we have one license from integrity siding and windows. Citizen concerns, any others beside this one, direct item? Okay. We'll get it when we're at the item on the agenda. Adoption of consent agenda?
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda, items A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Items for commission action. Item G, consider authorizing construction of storage at Memorial Hall for the VFW flags. I know the VFW has really been interested in relocating the flags back to Memorial Hall, and I'm pleased to see the diagram that the proposed areas construct some storage areas in what would be the southeast corner of the Civic Center. So, you know, we had looked at some other areas, I think even originally before the remodeling of Memorial Hall, they were stacked back in the utility area. Looking at the flags being, the casket flags for our military and this being Memorial Hall, I'm pleased with the staff finding such a space for them that they can be preserved and presented as they deserve.
As you know, Mayor, we were looking at under the stairs, but because of the difficulty and what we might run into there, and because of the fact that we do it where we're planning it now, it will be less noticeable and less intrusive, and really more cost effective. So, I think there was some disagreement on doing it under the stairs, and I think this is a lot better alternative. It will not only provide them their space for their flags, but it'll also give us an equal amount of storage space, which we really need here in the hall.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, you know, looking in the future, if there's funds available even to have an engraved plastic plaque or a sign, something noting what is stored in there to just bring memorance for the sacrifice that our military men and women have given to our country to allow us the freedoms that we have. That was the reason I wanted to bring attention that the public does know that the flags are going to have a permanent home here in Memorial Hall now. So, with that, I'd make a motion that we authorize the construction of storage area at Memorial Hall for the VFW burial flags.
Second.
Jen, would you read the motion back?
I have a motion and a second to authorize construction of a storage area at Memorial Hall for the VFW burial flags.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item, item H, consider request to cosponsor the Kansas Department for Aging and Disability Services meeting on February 16th, 2016, from 3:00 to 5:00 at Memorial Hall regarding the provisions of mental health and substance abuse services in our area. Mickey, would you want to?
Yes, this is a item that actually, we didn't have to have the commission's approval because they're using it during regular working hours, but we wanted to bring it to the public's attention because it is something that I think would be a benefit to all the whole state, particularly people in our area. As you know, there's been some issues with having a place for individuals, for example, who have mental breakdowns. Right now, a person without proper, very good insurance has the choice of being helped on an outpatient basis at Fort County or going to Osawatomie. And we know some of the difficulties and issues that have been up there, and this will provide a place in southeast Kansas. They currently have one identified, I don't know the state of any of these, the process in any of these other areas, but they're going to locate one in Kansas City area, one in Wichita area, one in the western part of the state, and then one in southeast Kansas. And this Fort County has been contacted by the state, and they're requesting that they put one in southeast Kansas, and we would like for that to be, the possibility that being in Independence, maybe in some of our facilities, because they're, according to the director, very ideal for what they need.
Okay.
That'd be fantastic.
Yeah.
Be able to have that here in town, that'd be wonderful.
Yeah, I'm sure it would be some employment, and some employment in areas that we've had people lose employment recently, so hopefully some of those people would be able to obtain jobs.
So can more than one of us attend that?
We can, we can post it as a meeting workshop, and anyone can go. If we're going to have more than one that wants to go, we shouldn't refrain from going.
See, that's next Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Maybe Tuesday.
Yes, Tuesday.
I'll be in Topeka.
But if two wants to go, we still post it as workshop.
I'd like, I'd like to.
Great.
So y'all take care of getting a special notice published for that, and identify it as just a workshop. Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion for item H.
And make a motion, we cosponsor with the Kansas Department for Aging and Disability Services a meeting on February 16th from 3:00 to 5:00 at Memorial Hall regarding the provision of mental health and substance abuse services in our area.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Jen, would you read the motion back, please?
I have a motion and a second to sponsor a Kansas Department for Aging and Disability Services meeting on February 16th, 2016, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Memorial Hall regarding the provision of mental health and substance abuse services in our area.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. And now we'll look at item O. Report on status of trans systems projects. Sean?
Thank you, Mayor. I can start with the street projects. The 10th and Chestnut and West Main, the construction's complete, but we have some final paperwork to do, and hopefully at the next commission meeting, we'll have a final change order, which is a deduction on West Main mainly due to some liquidated damages and final pay request. So hopefully at the next meeting, we'll be able to close those out. Peter Pan Road, the intersection with the highway, that is a 2017 GI project funded through a grant from KDOT. Plans are about 50% complete. It's, KDOT has a process you go through with 30, 60, 90% plans, so it's about 50% complete. It's scheduled by KDOT to be bid in January 2017, so we're entering the utility relocation and right-of-way acquisition phase. We don't anticipate a lot of right-of-way, but there will be some needed for that project.
So Sean, how far east and west does that go, and then north and south?
Okay, it mainly is just the north leg of the intersection, but the ditches are so steep there, there's been access issues into those commercial businesses, there's been a couple trucks turnover, so it's really widening that, adding some storm sewer to take care of that issue is the main driver behind the project. Why, why the city got the grant is to eliminate those.
Like 100 yards north of the intersection, or?
I, yeah, I believe it's a little farther than that. I can send the commission the 50% plans. We had a field check last week with KDOT, which is basically, they come out and review the plans with the city and with us, and that went pretty well. There's not a lot of changes they want, but, yeah, it's a little farther than 100 yards, but...
But it's all in the city limits?
Yes, all in the city limits.
However, it does affect the county roads, and there is a need, because the budget, as you know, has gone up from 650 up to over a million dollars. There's a, at the pre-construction, I mean, at the meeting with KDOT, it was pointed out that if we could close that intersection on the north side for 90 days to get it done, it would save us money, and since the budget is up, we really need to do that. I've sent Sean direction, had him directed to give it with the county, because even though it's not in the county, it's going to affect their traffic flow, but if there's any way we can close that intersection, just the north side, it wouldn't affect the Walmart traffic, but it would certainly, they think, help our cost, and we need to keep it down.
So is that a 90-day project, then?
If it's closed.
Yeah, and that, the way KDOT does it, that's 90 construction days, so that's working days, so you don't count the weekends, holidays, things like that. So it ends up being more like five months for a 90-day.
They believe if they are allowed to close it for that period of time, they can use the current traffic signals, correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, and not have to do any temporary, which would be some significant cost savings, besides the fact it's going to be a lot easier for contractors to get in there if it's closed than if you have to operate with traffic.
Where does the storm drainage go at that corner? Is it open ditch and then goes under 75 South?
Correct, correct. We'll be doing some extensions to that, to the north, to help widen the road. That's exactly right.
So it'll be done, the construction will start in the spring, is that it?
Yeah, Jen, so we bid it in, the KDOT will bid it in January, and then, yeah, it's usually about 30 days before the contractor will start on that type of project, so the spring, yes, so it's 2017. And the other KDOT-funded project that the city has is the 2017 Klink project, which is US 75, Penn Avenue, Chestnut to Oak. We don't, we're not under contract to do that yet, but we're, be providing a contract to the city for, an engineering contract for review here within the next...
Well, where was it from?
Chestnut to Oak. And that is Mill and Overlay and the remaining ADA ramps for that area.
That's also 2017.
Yes, but, yes, I'm sorry, it is 2017, but they'll allow that to occur in June and July. It's a little different pot of money from the GI, so they'll allow us to build that this summer, even though it's in their fiscal year 2017.
So this June and July?
Yes, this June and July on this project.
I didn't hear what street it was on, or, excuse me?
US 75, Penn Avenue.
Penn, okay.
And then, there is a, the 2018 GI project that we've talked about before, a potential one, that's where there's been a number of failing joints on West Main between 10th and 11th Street. We've discussed applying for a GI grant for that. They've changed that program a little bit. KDOT has bumped the grant amount up to a million dollars, so we reviewed that project with KDOT, the local KDOT office, just to see their thoughts on if it would qualify for that grant, and they thought it was a good, would be a good application for the city to apply. They thought that we, the city should apply from 10th to 9th, no, 10th to 8th, I'm sorry, I'm going the wrong way.
Scaring me there.
10th to 9th is, 10th to 9th is where the failing joints were, are, and then KDOT recommended another block in the, in the grant application, 10th to 8th, so we'll assist the city in putting together a concept drawing and a cost estimate for that application, which I think's due in about a month.
You know, when we had talked about the 10th to 9th Street, we questioned how far east it went. How do we determine what the extent of the deterioration is of that section? The highway, that is Main Street part of, what, 160?
Yes, it is.
From 10th to, what is it, Cement?
Correct. Correct. Yeah, I mean, it's like most cities, I mean, it is, you have more projects than, than money. We simply reviewed that with KDOT.
Yeah.
Tried to fit within their parameters to maximize the city's dollars. Basically, we feel that a million dollars is going to cover the vast majority. The city has to kick in 10%, but it'd cover that project. We really can't do, if we did more than that, then it's just going to be all city money. Yes, yes.
So then you come back later and do another section?
That's exactly right, is, we would, the city would have the option of applying in the future for additional KDOT grants, and just package them to maximize the city's dollars.
In doing that, will that include new sidewalks, too, when you get between 9th and 8th?
Yes, it will include new sidewalks where they're, where they're needed in that stretch.
Okay, because there's, I think there's some old curb cuts still in on the north side of the street from 8th to...
Yes, and that, that is one reason why they thought it could, it would qualify for the GI money, because we would be eliminating some of those old entrances that aren't, aren't really used anymore.
Good. And this will be a grant we're going to apply for?
Yes, yes.
Sean, with the personal wellbeing so far down, are the cost of asphalt coming down significantly as well?
Yes, it does have a big impact, but like gasoline, there's, there's a limit, because what's happened is the refineries have retooled where they extract all the gasoline they can out of a barrel of oil, so there's not as much waste oil as there used to be, so there, there is kind of a limit to how low asphalt will go, but it certainly does make an impact. We bid a pretty large project in Joplin, and they, at the end of last year, and the, the price per ton was $45 a ton in place, and just last year before that, here, a couple years ago, it's been 80 or 90, so it is significantly cheaper.
Because I'm assuming that Peter Pan project would be asphalt?
It's a combination of both, but yes, yes. The Klink project would be all asphalt, and that's the one that would, you'd probably see the big, big benefit on. The other projects, wastewater projects, the Basin 5, CDBG, we've advertised for bids for, I think it's February 22nd, and that keeps us on pace with getting that awarded per the CDBG schedule, so we would have to, we'll hopefully be at the February 25th council meeting, or commission meeting with a recommendation on, on an award for the Basin 5 project.
When did you say bids are due?
February 22nd.
Thank you.
Do you know how many bidders have plans yet?
I believe there's five, and it is a, mainly a pipe reaming project where they ream out the old pipe, pull a new pipe in behind it, but there's also some in situ form, specified or cured in place piping, which is essentially a fiberglass liner in certain areas where just the conditions are such that there's no way to get equipment in along the easement without causing some significant property damage.
There was a section between Penn and 6th, south of Edison, when we replaced or redid that section of sewer line from Poplar to, to Edison that was collapsed or in bad condition. Is that included in the project, too?
Yes, yes. That is, there were several places like that, and I was talking with Terry, there's, you could spend a lot of money in Basin 5, there's more, we've broken it into a base bid with alternates, and we're not, we have right now a million dollars slotted, $500,000 block grant, $500,000 loan, and you could spend much, much more than that in Basin 5. So we'll analyze those bids and be able to see what we think.
Are we replacing manholes or just refurbishing them?
In general, replacing, replacing them. In the pipe reaming process, that manhole location essentially becomes a bore pit.
Oh, okay.
But, but on the in situ form type projects, those manholes will be lined in place, they aren't removed. There's a cementitious coating that goes on the inside of the manhole.
You said it will completely take care of Basin 5?
It will not, no, or 1 million will not. You would have the option of, of increasing the KDHE loan if you chose to do that.
Is it going to take care of half of it, or?
Depending on bids, yeah, it would take care of half of it, from, from what we've seen.
So we'll still have more to go?
Yes. Does it include the manhole in the street by the post office?
Yes, yes, Terry pointed that one out to us as well.
Okay. On the, on the funding, earlier we had earmarked 400,000 from the KDHE loan, and then 100,000 coming out of the sewer fund. We'd also earmarked the 400,000 for Lakeview Lift Station. So have we got, is Lift, Lakeview still?
Lakeview's in, it's in, it's been sent to KDHE for review and approval, but we don't have approval back yet to bid that.
Sean, can you go over one more time on Lakeview, about the fact that it will not cure the problem like these recent lift stations have? It's more like a Band-Aid, like we did in front of, on the street in front of Walgreens.
Yeah, on, well, on, Lakeview is a, it takes in a much larger area than, than, say, the Birdie Drive Station. The Birdie Drive Station was a, took in a small, very small area. It was just a kind of an antiquated design and a dilapidated lift station, so replacing that, you know, we've pretty well taken care of that problem. When you get into the larger lift stations that take from a big area, then it turns into more of an issue because your sanitary sewer system, and this is every city in general, it's not just Independence. Your sanitary sewer system is in such poor shape that during a significant flood event, you're taking on so much water, there's absolutely no way, and 100% of the time, you can, you can make that lift station big enough, 100% of the time, you're pumping that water, and KDHE realizes that, too. You just, you don't want to get in situations where you're, you're overflowing every month, or, or every time it rains a half inch, but if you get a six-inch rain, you're, you're probably going to get in a position where you're having, still having overflows.
So you're saying probably 80 or 90% of the time?
Yes, yes, and that, that's a common problem in every city USA. It's just, it's a balancing act between, let's just make stuff big enough to transport and treat everything, or fixing your, your system like we're doing in Basin 5, so...
How big of an area, because that, when it overflows, it runs into Roger Lake.
Correct, and, and again, we're going to significantly reduce that. It's, it's not going to occur nearly as often as it does now. It just, there's a, there's a limit to how big we can make that lift station.
So, kind of on our, our plan, is, is that area small enough that a similar Basin 5 project would be worth looking at doing some line replacement there?
Well, I mean, there's always, for infiltration and inflow, it's just a continuous problem. It is just, where is your money best spent?
Right.
And it is a matter of where are you having the most problems, overflowing or surcharging manholes? Certainly it's worth looking at doing the next project in that area. That, yeah, Terry and I were discussing what basin is the next worst basin, next to 5, and we're going to try to sit down, and we're, another project I wanted to update is the GIS-based evaluation, which we can get into that later, too, but it is...
So you're trying to find the worst of the worst?
Exactly.
Because you don't have to eliminate the good, because there's not any.
Exactly. I mean, that's exactly right, you could, and it's everywhere nationwide, our infrastructure's in such poor shape, it's not, well, let's just go replace it because it financially can't happen. It's where is the, where is your money best spent?
So, you know, a year and a half, a year, a year and a half ago, we, a master plan completed, this is all part of the master plan, starting with the highest priority on down, is that?
Right, and that's, that's what we're doing, too, is, in the, that GIS-based capital improvement plan, we're kind of laying out for the next five years, here's the projects we see. In fact, we're at that point that we've kind of done our ideas, and we just start having meetings with city staff about what their ideas are, and then eventually the commission about it.
That's good, because that allows us to target areas more effectively with the dollars that we have available. That's, that's, I'm glad to see we're doing that.
What's the budget for Lakeview?
I believe it's 400,000.
Still 400?
Yes.
It's actually called Lakeside.
Is it Lakeside?
Yeah.
Okay. So, then is, since we double budgeted the 400,000, we've got the 400,000 from somewhere else?
No, that, there is, in the current loan amount that's remaining, there is enough for 400,000 for Basin 5 and 400,000 for, for Lakeside, and it's fairly easy to amend that loan if you choose to do it. The, the state KDHE would allow you to increase that loan if you chose to do it.
Well, last, I think you did a breakdown showing where we had spent the money of that 4 million, and...
Yes.
It came down to 400,000, and the last I saw it was for this Lakeside Lift Station, but then we had talked about, so...
Yeah, there, that's probably confusing, because they're identical numbers, but they, yeah, there is enough for both, and like I said, if you chose to amend it, especially for an INI reduction project, the KDHE would like to see that happen. Or a project that reduces overflowing manholes.
Okay. And the capital basin improvement, that's coming?
Yeah, we're, we're, we've got our, like I said, our ideas of projects laid out for the next five years for water, sewer streets, and we need to just start having those work sessions with city staff, and then eventually commission to... sessions with city staff, and then eventually commission to, to refine those. Because like I said, it is an exercise of where do you want the money spent, because there's a lot of opportunities to spend the money. And then what, what we're fin, finishing up is recommendations on the, the water plant and the, and the wastewater plant. The electrical modifications, we've got an engineer, electrical engineer coming down next week to look at, look at those so we can finalize a cost estimate.
Shaun, has he contacted the guy with West Star?
Yes. We, well, we have, yeah, we have talked to West Star and got their loadings. They, they would like to meet with us too when we're, when we're down looking at that, because they have a pretty big stake in, in crossing the river at that location, so. The only other project I have on my list is the ADA curb ramp project, phase three. That's Mission Construction. Since they finished the West Main and Tenth and Chestnut, they've ramped up on that. They're about forty percent complete by the pay requests they've turned in. With the weather extensions, they're supposed, they're scheduled to be done, or their contract time is up in March, they're going to probably struggle to hit that. But, but we'll see, because they have ramped up significantly. They're doing about at least twenty ramps a week now, so. So it's moving pretty fast.
Does that count all the alleys they're doing right now?
Uh, yes. Yes. And there, there was a question about alleys. The alley ramps were kind of a gray area in the, in the DOJ order. When Tony was here and was the, the ADA coordinator, I think was his title, we, we met and went out and looked at a lot of those. And if we're in that area working, the decision is made, let's get, let's fix those alleys. I think the idea is eventually, you know, have ramps at the corners, the ramps at the alleys, and then the city would do the infill work on the, or, or come up with a program as needed on the infill between the sidewalks. We can't, with the block grant money, we can't really go in and just pick a block and fix the whole thing. They won't, they won't let us do that. They'll let us fix the ramps, but we can't go in and just wholesale do sidewalk.
But we're doing alleys even if there are no ramps involved?
Yes. It's, it's.
So they can roll across?
Correct. We're installing the ramps in those locations, yes.
Yeah, I thought in the consent agreement, they had identified that where a, a street had been repaired, milled, overlaid, or new streets since ninety-one, that those sidewalks touching that new work had to be. But, you know, the alley would be questionable in, in that case. And then I noticed some ramps were going on other streets that hadn't been worked on, they'd all been done before ninety-one. And, you know, that's why I wonder with our, our money, if DOJ's not requiring us to do an alley, you know, would be better to, to do just the, the ramps that, where we've milled and overlaid?
I really, I mean, to me, I, you, the city can give us direction if we don't want us to do the alleyways. We don't, we won't do the alleyways, and we can certainly take those out of the current project and add some other curb ramps in.
I just wonder on our, our money to get a grasp of where we, we are with our ADA projects, that we've still got work at the park to do and?
Some of those are, are needed because of requests from disabled individuals. And if we didn't do them on this, we would be doing them probably on that spring project anyway. So I think it was just more.
Yeah. And in, in addition to ADA ramps, we, you know, Tony and Kelly have pretty continuously sent us any complaint they've had, and we've tried to add those into the project too. So Mickey's right, some of those alleys were probably complaints for individuals that we've added to.
Yeah, I could, I could see when there's a complaint by a citizen. But if we don't have the sidewalk complying between the ramp and the alley, we still haven't accomplished anything that, you know, it's, it's just a matter of dispersing the money to the best place that if we're, we got sighted on the park and there's still work there, and, you know, some of the buildings, audio and entrances, that maybe instead of doing alley ramps, we could actually address where we're doing the, and like Poplar Street was a mill and an overlay, so we needed to do those ramps. But, you know, you know, the, the sidewalks along there are, are not in the best that we're going to really get improved handicap traffic between corner to corner.
But it is an oddity in that, you know, we can spend this grant money on the ramps at the alleys or at the corners, but we can't really go in and?
Right.
Fix those linking sidewalks wholesale.
Most of the work we've done that was not required by the DOJ is work that they wanted us to do in that it completes the route. And as some of the citizens have pointed out, you know, you spend all this money to do the ramps, and you've got access, but then here's this bad spot. What good is it? And we've done some of those for that purpose, just to complete the route.
Yeah. And that's where we've got the sidewalk, street money that, you know, for ADA, if we did it just where we're mandated to, we could get more mileage out of it, and then look at our sidewalk plan to address the walks in between the ramps.
But if we do that, we would have citizens say, yeah, you did all of this, but then you left that spot there. We can't even use it. So it kind of becomes a, a matter of timing. It seems to me you'd be better off, you know, go ahead and completing the route rather than wait until spring for another project, simply because of the way citizens look at it.
Yeah. And then just, you know, the, the money of, of getting our compliance with ADA first, that's, that's a big portion. And where we've milled and overlaid Laurel, we've worked on Main Street, Second Street, Edison, Tenth Street. There's a lot of individual ramps there that, you know, it's, if we had a lot of money coming in, then alley crossings would be fine. But if we're running short on, on money, then, and, and like I said, we've still got to do the park. And I think last time, Shaun, I asked about your kind of a, where are you on the contract? There's, I don't know if you and Mickey have had a chance to get together to look at that, to make sure we're staying on, on track with all, all that. But the park has some features that are, you know, pretty priority for the handicap out there. We've got some nice exhibits and the train and merry-go-round. And, you know, I think we need to devote some of our ADA money there if we could make sure we get the circulation. Years ago, one of the members of Lions Club was in a wheelchair, and the elevator went into the library, and he said, and the ramp, he said, that's the first time in his life he had ever been able to get into that facility. And, and we're making significant improvements, and the park would be nice to make sure we get the even spread of some of our money, but.
Park is addressed later on in the plan.
Yeah, we, we have designed the, what we call the Black Bear Trail. It's the trail leading down to the Black Bear and Kitty Land, and then the other violations were generally parking around the oval and in some other. That's been designed. It's, it's pretty well ready. It's just, when does the city want to add that to the next construction project? And it, it's just those, those haven't been able to qualify for block grant funding to date, is why we've shown a lot of, had a lot of progress on the, the ramp side. We've gotten, been lucky enough to get three block grants for it, and there's not any of that type of funding for those other facilities.
Have you looked at the, the storm drain lids that, in heavy rain on Tenth Street at Marvin's?
Is that, that's where the new project joins? What, what happens there? When we do a project like that, KDOT requires the storm sewer that we put in to be designed, designed to a cer, certain standard, and it's essentially the ten-year event, meaning it'll handle a ten-year storm. They don't care what we tie into. So what we've got is a, is a, a sys, new system that has ten-year capacity, but your existing system doesn't. So, yeah, I mean, what, what we've had to do is either, in, in other projects, it's unfortunately pretty common for that to occur, and you end up putting like a bolt-down lid or, or welding that lid shut, and then it just, it just surfaces in one of the inlets when that occurs. So that, that's kind of the background on, on how that happens. And with the idea being you're eventually going to upgrade that downstream storm sewer, but until that occurs.
You know, down farther south, we had some collapse of a storm drain. Did you, we just did the camera in the sanitary sewer, didn't we? We didn't?
Correct.
Camera the storm drain. Is it possible that there's some blockage?
Yeah, it's possible. It is possible. Yeah, we, we, it just, it's difficult to find, more difficult in storm sewers to video it, but it's not, not impossible. It, it happens all the time.
Yeah. That, I was on birch, I think, the side fell out or the top collapsed.
Yeah, we ended up replacing it with precast, yeah.
Yeah. That's, I just wondered if that had been, or there's some blockage from construction in there too.
Could be. The next heavy rain, we'll try to have some technicians, you can check flow in the inlets and determine.
Send a man with his mask and flippers?
There you go. There you go. Now, you can pull an inlet cover and see if it's downstream and see if it's flowing like it should.
Yeah.
That would be a good thing to check.
Yeah. We'll do that.
Is that it?
That's all I have.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Shaun.
Thank you, Shaun. Okay, next item. Item A, consider, item, what did I say? I?
A.
A. That's what I thought it did. Item I. Consider authorizing use of Memorial Hall tax credits to fund budget shortfall for operation of Building D.
Now, this is just to get a, a operating budget for the building. As you know, there are expenses that, with that acquisition, and this is just a, a budget to work from. And we need to get that approved, so we will have one. There is a question of where you want to take that money out of. We've got tax credits. There's also, you know, with the fact that we are saving imaging equipment for our healthcare, I think it certainly would be appropriate to use economic development funds. It's just whatever the preference for the commission is.
Looking at the, the preliminary budget, it looks like there's some items that, you know, preliminary is probably correct, that elevator maintenance, you know, maintenance on fire, sprinkler, alarm, other employee cost. Where are we actually going to be with our projected expenses on?
Well, well, this preliminary budget will certainly change if we're successful in other activities being there. As you know, there's some other opportunities for some other programs besides anything that the commission might decide as far as the city hall. And as I said, this is just a preliminary budget, something to work from now. And as those things hopefully develop, there'll be other changes that'll have to occur in the budget.
I see the expenses going up, though. You know, we've got two traction elevators that have monthly service contract. We got one hydraulic elevator that'll have service contract. You know, the generator testing, monitoring systems, you know, the, this looks like just a start, but, you know, I guess I'm concerned with our, our funds for Memorial Hall, that we've been using it to buy floor finishing machines and equipment, and the same with quality of life, that those are kind of our maintenance accounts. And I think, well, we got five hundred and ten thousand in Memorial Hall fund, but, you know, our, our budget, not the revenue part, but the expenses seem a little, little light.
Jen, you wrote this memo, and you recommended that the, the balance be funded with Memorial Hall tax credits. Why do you, why do you feel like that's the best choice?
Well, I really feel like that's, we haven't touched those tax credits. We've kind of set them aside for a rainy day. And I feel like until we really have a, have a plan for what we're doing with this building, until we get the revenue going, that that's where it should come from. Now, you'll notice in my note at the bottom that I am recommending that we go after those grants that were part of the proposal, and, and I would use that grant money first. This is just where I would go if we don't, if we aren't able to completely cover our expenses.
Right.
We haven't touched the Memorial Hall tax credit since I've been in office. It's at five hundred and ten thousand dollars, and we are pursuing some more credits for some work that we have done. However, I mean, I will admit that is a fund that is not replenished. It doesn't have tax revenue going into it. So once that money's gone, it's gone. So we do need to be wise about spending it.
It seems like, Mickey, that with the jobs it's created, that economic development money seems to be appropriate to take. Maybe we can balance it out somehow. I'm not sure exactly how that'd work, but.
Certainly for the portion that has to do with the lease on Jane Phillips, it certainly would be appropriate.
I mean, I can see it being parceled out or percentage out some way. That way, there's a direct correlation to it, so that, you know, there's some reason with us to how you took the money out of it.
Jen, I see that you give some of the credit to Mike Passour for coming up with some of these numbers. Are these based on square footage compared to our other buildings? Or, I know you had to pick some of these kind of out of the air, but?
I, I will be honest, this was a quick conversation that we had, so that they're not based on square footage. They're based on, we think this sounds reasonable. This gives us a little bit of breathing room, but, you know, like the mayor said, we may have expenses come up that?
Sure.
Because we haven't managed this building before, we don't know what to expect.
Right. But we don't know what Mercy spent on utilities or?
I believe we do actually have a good estimate on the utility numbers. We do have a good estimate on the insurance numbers and the maintenance personnel. Everything else is, is kind of an unspoken. The chemicals, we haven't operated that boiler, so we don't know what they spent on chemicals to keep the water soft and stuff like that.
Also, it's hard on the utilities because they, you know, we're grinding down, and then we're hopefully grinding up. So it's hard to know what you're going to have each year.
That's a pretty high utility number for a building that's mostly vacant.
And ideally, that's on a fully used, used building, and because it is vacant, and until, I mean, so ideally, that number will come in lower for the year. It just depends on where we end up at the end of the year with what all we've had to do in the building.
When will, when will there be a, an actual accurate budget prepared?
Well, I would say when we know what we're doing with the building. It would be a lot easier to do that. But as we don't know what the use of that building is right now, we can't budget for expenses, for renovations, for whether we're going to be putting utilities into the whole building and a part of the building. I mean, it's really hard to do not know in what we're using the building for.
Well, as you know, even our annual budgets that we do are all just projections.
Yeah.
And they're based on, but they're based on history. Unfortunately, in this case, we don't really have the history, so it's complicated.
Utilities are so weather dependent and all, so I don't know how you'll have a good budget figure anytime soon for, for most of these.
Well, with the way the HVAC's been reconfigured, there'll be some efficiencies there. Isn't that correct? Because they're only going to use?
There should be, yes.
I mean, a considerable amount, because they were.
We're going to have a lot less square footage.
Lot less square footage to heat and cool, and then they're only going to use a part of the, that new power plant to, so I'd say that, I don't know if that's actual built. I mean, that'd be conservative.
The boiler fires, and it, it might have stages that it comes on, but it's, it's still based on the capacity. still based on the capacity that, uh, you know, it's not gonna be, be cheap. And the same with the chiller, once we get to, I don't know if it's a four-pipe system, if the chiller runs to keep internal temperatures cooled while it has to heat the outside, but that's...
Well, there's some other ways to gain efficiencies, like you could transport gas to it through a marketer. I mean, uh, there's some things that I think you can look at that would be worth exploring, especially since that, that's a large building. I'm sure that'd fit within tariffs, KCC tariffs.
So, where do we think best to take this money from?
I'd suggest we let the clerk look at it and take an appropriate amount from the ED fund and the rest as she's proposed. I think we ought to be able to keep justification on what we use on that economic development fund, although the commission has total authority to do what you want to with it. It's strictly up to you, but it's historically always been used for economic development. If you don't want that, we can continue on this proposal.
Well, it seems like creating jobs is economic development.
But is there any reason not to use the Memorial Hall tax credits?
No.
I mean, that's just sitting there, right? I, I don't have a preference. Whatever you gentlemen think is great is great with me, but...
I don't. I don't either. I was just thinking out loud about parceling it out some.
Yeah, I don't know. It, it's gonna be hard either way, you know? You look at economic development money to use to sponsor businesses coming in, you know, a small portion is used for that, but then the historic tax credit, the building ages, once, we need some reserve in that to handle maintenance here as the systems age, the same, you know, we've, we've seen that with the swimming pool and the quality of life fund.
The, the thing is, is that those Memorial Hall tax credits are not specifically directed to any expense.
Right.
That's kind of, I, I don't want to use slush fund, cause that's not what it is, but those are reserve dollars that can be spent anywhere. Quality of life can also be spent on Memorial Hall. Um, so just because those tax credits are from Memorial Hall does not mean that they're tagged to this building since Memorial Hall fits under quality of life. What you do have is with economic development, it has to be spent on something for economic development. So, if this meets that criteria, perhaps it does make sense to spend some economic development dollars so that if we need money for something else, we have those tax credits that are not tagged specifically for any purpose to use. I mean, if something were, if a disaster were to happen in the city and it's not economic development, you couldn't use those dollars, but you could use the Memorial Hall tax credit dollars. I don't know if that makes sense, but those funds aren't specifically for any use.
Yeah, are we, you know, are we looking at just taking one hundred sixty-six thousand five hundred out of that or are we looking at using that as a funding source for this building?
Um, I think this, I'm gonna go back to this is very preliminary. Ideally, we'll either have more businesses bringing revenue in or if city hall were to move there, then our operating budget moves to that building as opposed to the building that we're in. So, this is just a, possibly by the end of the year, this is what we'd have to look like. What I would do is recommend that we assess as we go along. If that number gets bigger, if that number gets smaller, we can make the decision, but, but ultimately, we do need to know that we do have funding to run this building. I mean, so I think this is a start of a conversation. I imagine this conversation will happen multiple times over the years, we figure out more, more certainly what we are doing with this building.
So, there, there wasn't a feasibility study prepared prior to accepting the building and there wasn't a actual budget prepared on expenses?
Yes, there was.
I requested and didn't get them. Was there a reason?
Well, because this is, this is less than what that was.
No. I think utilities originally was one forty and maintenance operation was eighty to a hundred. So, that's why it, it would have something to, to compare on that we have a realistic...
I believe the utilities number that you're looking at was probably the increase over the current utilities that we're paying at city hall. So, the one hundred and forty thousand that you saw would be an increase if city hall were over there, their utilities budget would need to be two hundred thousand, we're currently where it's at, it's sixty thousand. So, I, I mean, it kind of depends on what you were looking at. There were several documents.
Yeah.
But the two hundred thousand is the estimate that we have received when I was running those numbers, two hundred thousand was the estimate for this building.
Yeah. We didn't see anything. So, that's what we're just going on memory.
Well, didn't that, didn't that feasibility study include that four point six million for the additional, whatever work was gonna be done?
Yes.
So, is, is that in writing that we can have it to digest with all this preliminary study too?
Yeah, if you want it, we can certainly provide it. You have to understand it was historic and this, now we're getting actually closer numbers now than we had then, but it was done prior to acceptance of the building. We can provide that.
But they're both just guesses. We don't, we don't really know anything yet. I mean, we're not running a building yet. It's practically empty, so right now, the utility costs can't be that high.
And in some ways, this is a one-year deal, because if, you know, you fill it up, I mean, as we go along and it, there are more people come in there, it's gonna reduce it, so then the budget will change next year, could, as Jen's suggesting. That's one of the reasons, I kind of want to, you know, I think staff can develop a plan for us on how to do it. I'd like to protect the memorial tax credit because I think it gives us more flexibility in, in the event, who knows what can happen. I mean, that, the memorial, I think that flexibility becomes important going forward. So, I mean, that's my thought on it. But I think we can ask them to come up with a plan, come back and...
Have you considered contacting a property management company to get a form or some idea of how they prepare a budget for a building that they're gonna manage?
No, I hadn't yet. It's a great idea.
Yeah, that's, uh, that way it gives us some direction on what items, because this is totally new, I know. For us to look at a building of this sophistication, particularly the mechanical controls and, and some life cycles on that and, uh, that'd be really beneficial, I think, helping you look at, at the line items to, to fill out, so we look going forward to work from.
Agreed.
We gotta pay our bills.
Put this one on? Cable this one?
I think we need to go ahead and approve this. You can always amend it, but we need a, you know, a budget to work from. If you want us to bring, make those changes, come back at the next meeting, that'd certainly be appropriate, but we do need to get something soon.
Yeah. We need something to operate on, but then we need to come back and see the full picture too.
Well, I'm okay with approving this budget, cause a budget is a budget. I mean, it's just a, it's an estimate and, uh, then I, I think it's appropriate to ask staff to come back with, so how do we pay it?
Well, I would suggest you approve it tonight and, and ask staff to come back on a, at least quarterly basis and, and update, because it is so preliminary.
Yeah, I, I wonder, come back in thirty days with a more detailed budget? Would thirty days give you enough time to do that?
We can do a more detailed budget, but once again, if we have no idea what the space is being used for, it's hard to budget for it. If half the building's gonna be closed off and Jane Phillips is the only one in there, that's a very different budget than if the building's being used by multiple parties, so.
But you can't shut down the system and run part of it.
No, I, I agree. I am not meaning to be argumentative, but to tell me to, I mean, you can tell me to bake a cake, but if you don't tell me if it's a wedding cake or a birthday cake, those are two very different things. So, you tell me to put together a budget for a building that I have no idea how it's being used, I, I can guarantee that Mike would probably join me on that. It's a little bit hard to come back with a budget that, that I can say, yep, I'm ninety-five percent sure we're gonna hit this. I mean, you're, you're telling me now that you don't have a budget, you can, this isn't a realistic budget. I don't know that it can be more realistic in thirty days if I don't know what's in that building.
Well, the, just the, the basic systems, operation of the...
And I'm gonna tell you, that's what we have before you right now.
Yeah.
And, and I really, Mr. Mayor, I really don't mean to be argumentative, but if I don't know, I mean, if, if, if nothing's changing between now and next month, I don't know that I'm gonna have any different numbers before you and I feel like you want better numbers that we can stick to. And if nothing changes on what's going on in that building, I'm gonna come back with this exact same spreadsheet. I mean, I will absolutely make some phone calls and see if we can fine tune some stuff, but...
Yeah, that's all. Just check.
Okay.
You know, you can call the ARCO building, professional building, CRMC, Wilson County, check with them to see what their buildings are running and, um, the director of maintenance works for CRMC, he could help you with some ideas on, on some of that maybe.
I agree, but once again, they know what their buildings are being used for and we don't know what's in ours.
Yeah.
Well, I think we can approve this budget.
Yeah.
And if it needs to be amended, she can bring it back to us with an amendment and, because this can be a never-ending discussion here, so...
And it will almost have to be amended. I mean, it will have to be amended, because we just don't know.
You know, I would say that this would be, if, the only way we'd amend it is if it goes up. If it's less, because the numbers are conservative, then we're, the Dale Carnegie theory is plan for the worst, anything better, you can accept and improve upon. So, I, I would, to be honest, I'd make a motion that we approve the hundred and sixty-six thousand five hundred dollar budget and, uh, come back with a funding plan, how to fund it and, uh, then if it needs to be amended, we can amend it as you get more history. That's my thought.
Make the motion.
That's a long motion.
Go ahead and approve the budget and determine funding source that...
Yes, I would make a motion that we approve the hundred and sixty-six thousand five hundred dollar budget.
Do you mean the three hundred sixteen thousand five hundred dollar budget? That's, you're just looking at the...
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're right. Yeah, I'm looking at the, yeah, three hundred sixteen thousand five hundred dollars and then, uh, come up with a way that we're gonna fund it, basically the operating loss.
I'll second.
Jen, would you read the motion?
I have a motion in a second to approve the three hundred sixteen thousand five hundred dollar budget and come up with a method of funding it.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Uh, item J, consider de-annexation of thirty-eight point five acre tract located seven thirty Peter Pan Road.
Chuck Gog is scheduled to be here as a appointed representative of the board, but he got tied up in a meeting and I don't think he's gonna be here. We might, uh, put it off till the end of the meeting and see if he happens to show up. I doubt that he will, so, but I'm sure from talking to him, they're not in any hurry anyway, so we can, if he doesn't show up, we can table it till the next meeting.
Okay. Item K, consider adopting the following ordinances relating to the governing body to comply with new statutes. Number one, a charter ordinance exempting the city from provisions relating to filing of the government body, or filling of government body vacancies. City attorney, do you wanna...
The first ordinance is a charter ordinance that's recommended that we adopt. The league recommends this. As I explained last meeting, the twenty fifteen legislature, uh, let me backtrack. We have a commission manager form of government and there are five or six other forms of government. Some involve a, a mayor that's elected as a mayor. Uh, some forms of government, the mayor basically is a city administrator. Uh, we're the largest city, cities our size mostly opted and went to a vote and we elected, I think in the late seventies, to have the commission manager form. And they enacted a statutory scheme for that. Okay, now, the twenty fifteen legislature went in and basically ripped it apart. I don't think they did so knowingly. They went, they wanted to change the election cycle and, and anything remotely that had the word election in it was repealed and that's a, probably an oversimplification, but, uh, statutes found that, thirty-eight statutes that were repealed that specifically dealt with commission manager form of government. And they replaced those with three statutes and basically said, on some, most matters, you can just adopt your own ordinance, but in the area of filling vacancies on the city commission, uh, the legislature in, in a different section, this applies to all cities somewhat, uh, they created a statute that, that said, if you don't fill a vacancy in the office of city commissioner within, I think it was sixty days, then you have to, you have to schedule a special election and elect one within the next forty-five days. Well, the, the state statute we had been operating under, uh, which got repealed, no, that's not true. Uh, said that we should fill our vacancies within ten days. And in fact, when Commissioner Unruh resigned, that's what we did. So, we've always been operating under a much tighter timeframe and to go sixty days with a two-person commission would be difficult. So, I, our, in the league, in their, they did an analysis, it's about forty pages long of all these possible changes and I probably killed this, but they recommend on this charter ordinance that you basically opt out of this statute, which would require a special election. And in the other ordinance I'm proposing, I have the old language that we've, we've always followed, uh, the ten-day, have ten days to do, do an appointment like that. So, in a way, this charter ordinance dovetails into the other ordinance that's before you also. If, if you will, if you want to look at the other ordinance, I'll show you where it ties in. If you go to section five on vacancies, sub-A talks about, uh, filling vacancies in the manner already provided by law under the statute side of there and that's the statute we've traditionally followed. That statute is not in the commission manager section of the statutes, but a statute that was in the commission manager section of statutes used, and it's been repealed, said, to the extent that other statutes in other areas don't conflict with the commission manager statutes, we'll follow those. So, but that statute got repealed, so here we are, we, we don't have a statute on vacancy unless we put something in the ordinance, bottom line, so. Long story short, recommendation by, by the league is to opt out by charter ordinance of that one stat, one statute and then adopt your own statute by regular ordinance. And I'm sorry for the lengthy explanation, but it, it is a little complicated. I did send this, both these ordinances to the league and, and they're okay with them. I, I had a concern in the other ordinance about an open meetings question and they said it was okay, but I can get to that after you address the charter ordinance, unless you want me to go ahead with the other one now.
Uh, since we have to vote on both of them individually, why don't we, if the commission's comfortable, we'll go ahead and take care of the charter ordinance now, so...
I make a motion we approve charter ordinance number thirteen.
I'll second.
Okay. Jen, would you read the motion back please?
I have a motion in a second to adopt charter ordinance number thirteen.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next in ordinance affirming the city's adoption and continued operation under the commission manager form of government. That's, uh, I see you did address the possibility of all three of us being fatally injured in one accident that the government will continue on. Uh, makes me rest a lot easier.
You know, that's already addressed in the city ordinance and I honestly didn't know it existed, but it's, it's always been on our ordinance book and, uh, what I've done is I went through our city ordinances under article two and I went through the state statutes that were repealed, then I went through the state statutes that were enacted and I tried to pull out everything that was already in our ordinances and everything out of the state statutes that we were following and tried to piece them together in a little more understandable fashion. And that's what that ordinance hopefully is. Uh, the first part of it is, you mentioned, I think, the last meeting, mayor, ordinance that the league had promulgated and the first part of that is verbatim off that, I think down possibly through section one, starting with section two and after there are, section two is just changing the election, but starting in section three and, and everything after that is more or less out of the ordinance. and, and everything after that is more or less out of the ordinances we have on our books already, as well as some of the commission manager statutes that we've always followed, but, but got repealed, so.
So, now with the election changing to November of two thousand seventeen, it also changes the. What'd you call it, installation or the swearing-in to the second Tuesday of January, is that second Monday?
Second Monday, right, of January.
Of January.
Whoever's elected to the commission in November of two thousand seventeen, normally, the way we do it now, the next meeting after the canvass, you get sworn in. Under the new statute, you wait roughly two months to the second Monday in January to be sworn in.
So, does it have to be a Monday? I know, it's technicality, because typically we.
That's when the swearing-in. That's when the term expires of the previous by statute. It used to say until your successor's qualified, but that's not what the state statute says. We can't really opt out of that.
So, there'd be a special meeting called for that?
Ordinarily, I know in Oklahoma, we had the same type statute and most of the time the board would wait to the next regular meeting or next meeting, even if it was special, but I've had some that wanted to be sworn in immediately. I don't know if this language is exactly the same. I imagine it is, where they could have the clerks swear in after the second Monday.
I, I don't think, I don't think it mandates that you have a meeting on the second Monday. That's just a date they picked. I mean, to be honest, if you, say, you have two new commissioners, if they wanted to go get sworn in in the clerk's office, that doesn't take a meeting to happen. You could walk in and take the oath and then your meeting's on Thursday. Come back Thursday for the meeting. I mean, we can deal with that.
Any questions about the ordinance?
This basically mirrors what we had before, Jeff, then without. I mean, it's a mirror of our previous ordinance with just the, because of the election, the changes that are required. Is that correct?
It is.
Yeah, because not having a past, the other one to look at.
And this sets reorganization of the commission for next commission meeting? And then the next term will go till the second Monday? And then we'll change. Is that, you've got it all worked out?
I actually tried to pick a day that split, split the next two terms so that each one was shortened by about the same amount of time.
The current term and the next term.
Right, that's correct.
Right.
Split the difference, basically.
You know, we're, we're locked into a meeting on twenty-fifth. That's our meeting date. We're locked into the second Monday in January. And just tried to do it with somewhat fair.
Okay. Any further questions from the commission? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion we approve the ordinance affirming. The city of Independence's adoption and continued operation under the commission manager form of government. Is that, is that right, Jeff?
Second.
Motion in a second. Jim, would you read the motion back, please?
I have a motion in a second to adopt an ordinance affirming the city of Independence's adoption and continued operation under the commission manager form of government.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item L, consider direction regarding a request for the city to assume responsibility of the veterans' jet display at Riverside Park. Bill, did you want to address the commission about?
This was a request, I think some of the commissioners have approached me about this and I've been in conversations with the VFW about it. I'm also, have been trying to get ahold of Pat Oaks, who handles that for the government. However, when I first brought it to the attorney, we had some concerns over the maintenance, possible maintenance cost. But in talking to them, the only thing that they've had to do over the years is they've had to have it painted once, which Cessna volunteered to paint. There are some lights that really need to be repaired, but they don't generally get into that type of intricate maintenance. So, I would suggest that the body go ahead and approve it, subject to my conversations with that Pat Oaks, to confirm there's nothing significantly right now that has to be done to make it in compliance. As long as it's in compliance now, I think we could probably get that same party to help us if it needed to be painted again.
All those documents that were attached?
Yes.
Are those all, those all apply?
Yes, they all apply.
Insured for full replacement value. What's full replacement value of?
How do you know that?
Well.
How would you replace?
Mr. Juan Snyder knows that value.
Currently.
Would you, would you come to the microphone, sir? I've had people stop me on the street today and say, anybody in the audience, make them come to the microphone so we can hear them when we watch you on TV.
Bill Walden Snyder, President of the Heartland Veterans Organization. We have the memorial at the airplane. I'm also with the VFW who has ownership of, of the jet. It actually belongs to the Air Force Museum and there's a yearly, excuse me, a yearly requirement for. To prove that it's still in good shape, I guess, we have to take pictures and send it on a CD-ROM. And we're also required to maintain insurance. From the VFW's understanding, the insurance requirements, if the city takes ownership or, or whatever they, we call it. There, there are different insurance. Requirements that, that it's covered under an umbrella.
Yeah, it's a.
Policy with, with the city. The airplane was painted by Hackney when we first got it in, in nineteen ninety-four, ninety-five. I lost track of the date when Cessna painted it, so it's only been painted once or twice since it's been here for. You know, sixteen years or so. No, that's not right, that's.
So, you don't currently have it insured for full replacement value, whatever that would mean.
Sixteen thousand is, is, is current value.
Okay. Somebody assigned that value.
The, the Air Force Museum.
Okay, all right. I'd like to buy one for that.
But you can't make them airworthy.
When we got it, it was, and it was referred to as, as a drone. It, it came from the Boneyard in Arizona. And then the Air Force Museum took it over, but they call it a drone and it was painted with, with red markings on the tail and the nose and the wings, so they were going to shoot it down with something else, so. You know, why it's worth sixteen thousand if they were going to blow it up?
They're being optimistic, I think.
Awful big drone. Heard of the drones now.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, Steve, the VFW has told me just this week that I need to call that Pat Oaks, which is the one that, in that information, she's head of it.
Right.
I would recommend that we, we put it, table it tonight and put it back on next meeting after we've had a conversation with her. Because apparently, according to Bill and Steve both, the requirements are less even for the city than for the VFW. But I would want to confirm where we are right now before you consider it, since I haven't been able to talk, make contact.
The paper said that it can't have a third-party transfer, so.
Yeah.
We would have to fill out an application and it actually have to be.
Museum.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
And assign to us. Yeah, that, I think it would be beneficial if we can get the paperwork done.
I'm okay with doing it. I just think we need to make sure it's.
Right.
We go through the proper proto, proper protocol to be sure that for everybody, it's protected the way it should be.
Yes, sir.
In the case of a, some event, so.
So, we'll table this for further investigation.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You can come back next week if you want. They're all this fun.
Well, no, not next week. Not next week.
Two weeks, two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah.
Next meeting I'm at.
Or this is the first month, we're on the two-meeting month.
Item M, consider authorizing stop signs at Twelfth and Riley and twenty mile an hour. And no parking signs on the west side of Twelfth from Oak to Pecan.
Yeah, Commissioner, the city was approached by a citizen with concerns continuing on Twelfth Street. Basically from Riley North to Oak Street. Their initial request was for one-waying from Twelfth and Riley North to Oak Street and to limit parking on one side of the streets. City staff, along with engineer, has reviewed the area. We have some concerns with the parking lot of the high school dumping out onto Oak Street and coming down the Twelfth and that that would create some congestion, both at Tenth and Oak and into the neighborhood areas because of that. And therefore, we did not recommend one-waying the street. However, we did recommend no parking on the west side of the street and placing stop signs at Riley and Twelfth for both southbound and eastbound traffic and decreasing the speed limit to twenty miles per hour. In this process, we've tried to inform all the people in the area that are involved by sending letters to each of the residents. It's fifty-fifty. What I've, the ones that have come spoke to me or sent emails to Kelly that Kelly has sent to me and we've corresponded back and forth with them.
Fifty-fifty which?
Fifty-fifty one-way, no.
Okay, one-way versus not.
Yeah, I would say. They definitely have a problem and I think they will get up and talk to you guys in a minute about the. The kids are somewhat out of control.
The kids driving or?
Driving, coming south.
Yeah.
And I think they have some legitimate concerns that they won't pay attention to the stop signs there and will continue to race down that street and create danger. It is a narrow street by our guidelines and I believe it does fall under our ordinance guidelines to reduce the traffic or the parking on one side of the street. So, that was an easy, fairly easy decision to make therefore. Mickey went with the engineer and kind of drove that. I don't know if you have any more as far as what.
Yeah, the only recommendation that Sean Turner kind of disagreed with staff somewhat is that, I think, like the mayor, he thought the, the guard was overkill for city streets. He thought it was more than what really is necessary and sets a bad precedent, but that was just his side opinion. Other than that, he concurred with everything else.
So, reducing the speed limit to twenty essentially makes that a school zone.
Correct.
I mean, does that?
We're just, I, you know, I, I feel for them. I mean, in visiting with them and talking to them, it's, I mean, it's a race strip. One of the citizens there, who is an officer, works for the sheriff's office. When he, he called and spoke to me and I don't see him here tonight, but he concurred. He said, you know, my sheriff's car sits out in front. He said they.
That doesn't slow them down.
It's a raceway out there. However, you know, for him, and he realizes, and I think in the pictures, you will see that he has quite a few vehicles that he keeps on the east side of the street. But in what he does, he felt the one-way was going to be a hindrance to him and he wasn't in favor of that. But he himself is, while he's on duty and not busy in the county, is starting to try to enforce and slow the kids down. But he said it is definitely a problem. Everybody that has spoke to me has said it is a problem with the kids after school. It's an easy way to get out of that parking lot, shoot down that street, race down that street. And Fred, you probably know just from your, what's going on out there.
It's been an issue for a while, I think.
We just feel the design out in there, if we, one-way is really going to congest that after school and create more issues. But, you know, that's our opinion and our recommendation, so unless you have a question, I, I know, I think, Mayor, somebody's wanting to speak.
Yeah, John Koishen, would you like to address the commission?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I thank you for this opportunity. To give you an orientation. My neighbor, Larry Weimer, came to me asking for some ideas and what I, in my opinion, would help shortcomings, some of the shortcomings that we have. I've got some slides that's on the projector up there. I'm going to use this laser pointer to, to comment on some of the areas.
That's a nice laser.
In this aerial photograph, this is Pecan Street and Riley, Hickory and Beach. And then at the top of the screen, which you can't see, is Oak Street and the high school parking lot. Kelly, if you go to the next slide, please. This is where Mr. Weimer lives, right here. And as, as the students get out of school, they come south and they've missed this curve and wound up in this field. And on another situation, Kelly, next slide, please. You can see where they missed the, the turning radius there on Riley and wound up driving through Mr. Weimer's, which Mr. Weimer's yard. Next slide, please. This is Riley Street and Hickory Street and Twelfth Street here. As you can see, it's, it's fairly well wide open and very accessible. Now, if we go to the next slide. I'm sitting here on the intersection of Riley and Twelfth looking north and you see we have a couple of vehicles here on the, on the right-hand side. So, let's continue on to the next slide. And here, we're still going up Twelfth Street to the north. Next slide, please. And this slide here, we have Hickory and Beach. And we see quite a few vehicles parked right here. Next slide, please. And here, I'm setting, ready to enter the intersection of Oak and Twelfth pursuing to the north. And you see the vehicles on the right. Next slide, please. Continue on the same situation. We have three vehicles right here. Continue on, please. And we have this rather oversized truck that's parked right here. Continue on, please. I've lost my train of thought now, essentially threw the thirty-second flag up. Thank you. This is Hickory right here and I'm looking, no, this is Hickory right here. I'm looking back to the south and this is my vehicle. There's no, there's not enough room for another vehicle to come through here. Next slide, please. This is continuing north on Twelfth. You see another vehicle right here. This is a sick, this is a three-car driveway right here. You want me to continue on or you want me to stop?
Mr. Koishen has hit us three levels. Were you allowed to continue?
I have, I'm, I'm over halfway through.
Go ahead.
Next slide, please. This is again looking back to the south with a vehicle on, on the left-hand side facing north. Next slide. Same looking south with all the traffic we have here. Next slide. This is coming up to Beach Street and we have two vehicles here. Next slide. You can see this vehicle is very close to the stop sign. So, what happens here when you get up to. Beach, you can't pull over to get in the stop sign, so you're in the middle of the street obstructing traffic coming down from the south. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. There we go. Okay, here we're looking from Beach to Oak Street. Next slide. And there's some Beach looking to Oak Street with the high school parking lot. Okay, going back to simple mathematics, this is the standard design for a two-lane residential street with no parking. Each lane is twelve feet. I went out and measured the actual heel, the heel curb size and it's twenty-three foot eight inches. You take six inches and six inches away from the curb, you have a twenty-two foot eight traffic right-of-way. Uh, let's see. Twenty-two point eight feet and a medium-sized car is six foot ten inches wide. And you take that six inches, six foot ten inches off of the right-of-way, you come up with a traffic way of fifteen foot ten inches. Now, with that big truck there, it measures seven foot six inches and that narrows it down more to fifteen foot two inches for a traffic way. You take the standard-sized car at six. You take the standard-sized car at 6 foot 10 inches, times 2, that's 13 foot 8 inches for two cars opposing each other coming together. So you take the 15 foot 10 inches minus the 13 foot 8 inches for an automobile, that means there's 2 foot 2 inches space left in the street. Divide that by 2, you've got 1 foot 1 inch between each, each vehicle. Retrospectively, with the 15 foot 2, you take the 13 foot 8 off for the autos, that leaves you 1 foot 6, divide that by 2, and so that's 9 inches between the vehicles. So, in my opinion, the solution is a one-way drive going to the north. It eliminates the problem of the students coming out of that parking lot, and they run the stop signs. I've seen them do it several times. This way, everybody still parks on the street. It solves all the problems, you know? So that's what I have to say.
Thank you. So right now, there's stop signs at Beach and Hickory. And you're proposing to add three stop signs, or just-
Just two, two more.
For the north and south?
For, at Riley and 12th, adding one for southbound and one for eastbound.
But if you're going north, you don't have to stop at that?
If you're coming around the corner and coming north, we're not, we're trying to slow the kids coming south out of the high school parking lot racing. We're going to make them stop at every intersection.
But you wouldn't want to stop them north and south on 12th at Riley?
Well, Mark, I think technically, it's really not-
It's a three.
Because it's a T intersection. It's not a, where we could really stop. I mean, I guess you could stop them going north.
Yeah.
But basically, that's a T, so the north, I mean, as he showed, there's enough cars there that they got to stop and let cars come down.
It's one lane, but all the cars are there.
Yeah. Have any of the officers been running radar to see what the speed is, or have any tickets been issued?
I'd have Mark come up and talk to that.
He was hoping he'd get away with that.
Absolutely. To my knowledge, no, but I have my own duties as a detective, so I don't count tickets and see what people are writing unless they're arrested for something. So traffic wa, I don't know what they've written up there. I could check and see what, what's going on if you want to find out. I can check stats on it. I do know they've been trying to get in the area and patrol it. But as everybody knows, we have two officers on duty at a time. So if calls come in, and obviously, traffic issues get disregarded to the, to answer calls. So if they're available, they're supposed to be at all schools with school zones, and then this issue, this issue specifically was addressed that the officers are aware of, so.
Yeah, that's kind of hard with logistics to cover all those areas.
It's impossible with two officers on duty.
Right.
Well, if the commission wants, we could have Mark check on what we've done on tickets and maybe get a focus on that. Also, what we didn't ask the engineer is what complications would happen if we did change it to one way. So if the commission still wanted to look at that, we could have, get a report on what we expect other complications that would, would create, because we really didn't look at it in, in that degree. So if you want to put it off till two weeks.
I think the stop signs, or again, it would slow down the, the traffic and at least give the opportunity with the officer in the area, if they see them, to issue a citation for running the stop sign. What would, would help is to relocate the exit out of the school parking lot. You don't want to reverse the traffic, but if that exit didn't go straight into 12th Street, that would help a lot. Because it, yeah, I, I parked in that parking lot. I wasn't a speeder, but it is-
He is now.
Yeah. Mr. Koshen?
I recommend you table it, and you'll drive it yourself and draw your own conclusions. And it'll tell you the story.
Okay. Would you want to come to the microphone?
Yeah, I can. Andrew Dimo. I live at the corner of 12th and Beach, and I've witnessed, I myself, when I was in high school, blew that stop sign.
Got your ticket book?
I, I don't. I got a written warning that day, so, but I've been at my house at 3 o'clock when they get out, and if they're not turning the corner, spin the tires, you know, they're going straight, you know, hauling. And I've, you know, since I have two little girls now, I've kind of, you know, realized where priorities lie and, you know, where dangers are at. And I've yelled, pointed, you know, waved my hand at them when they drive by speeding. I recommend a northbound one-way, because you could put a stop sign down there, they're not going to stop. They don't stop at the one at Beach, so I just, I recommend a, a one-way northbound.
Well, what if you, what if you did the one-way between Beach and Oak Street? And then-
Just do part of it.
Yeah, because that would keep them from entering from the north, and it, that's a long, a long street for the residents along there, and there's, it doesn't look like there's a lot of houses that front on to 12th Street between Beach and Oak, and if, it might shut the door to bringing them down through there.
I can't speak beyond my, my corner, like what it would do to their intersection down there, if that would benefit. But I know if they were completely blocked off from heading southbound, that would stop most of that.
Yeah. Then there wouldn't be a way out of the parking lot-
Yeah.
-to go south on 12th.
You know, if you're worried about traffic going there, I've been there at 3 o'clock, 2:55 to 3:15 watching, and there's never more than three cars that are backed up at that stop sign when they stop. So, and most of them turn left, some go on straight, some go to the right, so, I mean, it's crapshoot on who's leaving, going which direction, but chances are they're in a hurry to get where they're going.
Right, okay.
So.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Mr. Wymer? Please come to the microphone.
As you know, I live at 12th and Riley, and I recommend you rethink the one-way. Guys, I've seen, I've seen them airborne at 12th and Hickory.
Rethink the one-way in which direction? You mean-
Pardon me?
You said rethink the one-way. We haven't made any decisions on the one-way. You're saying you're against doing a one-way?
Well, you've more or less decided not to.
We haven't decided anything yet, but-
Well, evidently you have, because you're, you're considering the stop signs and 20 mile an hour speed zone.
Okay, so I'm just trying to make sure I understand. You're saying you're in favor of making it a one-way?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thank you, I wasn't clear on that. Got it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
They're, they're just entirely too fast. Somebody's going to get hurt, if not killed. Really. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you want to table this for this meeting and drive and look, or do you have a recommendation?
I'd like for you to look at the one-way for that one block, like you were suggesting. I mean, that seems to be the issue, because if they can't, if they're not allowed to go south, that forces them to turn. I think it needs to be looked at, because does it create some issues somewhere else? That's, that's what my concern would be, is-
Yeah, they got to go somewhere.
Are they going to go to 13th Street and race, or, I mean, where will they go?
Then they'll go to-
Is that a legitimate concern?
Yeah, that was our concern. I think you have a good point. I think we can try.
Probably need to let trans systems go back and, hey, if we do this one block, where are they going to go? What's that going to do to us?
So in the meantime, if we got down there and wrote several tickets, because the way you modify behaviors to hit somebody in the pocket.
Let me just say, 10th, on 10th Street, east of the high school, there's a one-way, one-block street right there. They don't care. I've written tickets there for 22 years. I've wrote a ticket there for kids coming out of the high school that park on the east side of the school. That one-way gets utilized all the time, so you can make it a one-block one-way, just like Sycamore's a one-way. If people will abide by driving rules, then they will not use those streets like, but they're not going to. I mean, it's just reality.
They ignore the one-way?
Absolutely.
Wow.
I, I've seen that.
Yeah, I live right by Sycamore, and that happens. It's so funny when the cops just happen to be coming down and catching. I mean, I mean, I see it happen often on Sycamore.
If we're visible, they're good. If we're not around, then they're going to do what they're going to do. And 13th is probably just as bad, if not worse than 12th, but it's a straight shot, and they have railroad tracks to jump at the end of it.
So if the one-way is not going to slow them down, what is?
Close the street, I guess, because you're not going to-
Block off the street there at the high school?
I mean, I don't know how you're going to get that to stop without having enforcement there. I mean, and we're there as often as we can be-
Yeah.
-which is not ever enough.
Sure, okay.
But you're right, if we do stroke some tickets, maybe kids will get the idea. We could have our school resource officer do something with the school and make, make an announcement and have, you know, they have assemblies. I don't know, we could do a number of things.
I mean, imagine it's the same kids all the time, too, would you?
Most likely, but not always.
At least Drew's not doing it anymore.
Yeah.
Drew.
Has it increased this school year, or has it always been?
It's always been.
Even when you were a student.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, okay.
It, it really, it's, it's always been bad since I moved in. I've been there six years now. This year, there's a few of them, like, there's maybe two that are really, you know, stepped up more than anybody else, but I can't really, I, I don't remember the bigger model, where normally it's past my house by time.
It's just a blur.
Exactly.
John?
Just one last comment. There's been several times where I'm driving north on 12th and I come from Hickory, stop, stop sign, there's a car coming southbound from Beach, and he's coming on south, and I can't continue until he clears the 1100 block on 12th Street.
Just too narrow.
There's no two-way traffic there.
Yeah.
And so that's the other problem, but the one-way solves.
Right.
Commissioners?
Can we put this back on the agenda for our next meeting?
I think we need to investigate the one-way.
Make sure when we make a decision, it's the best one. I don't, I don't think there's a perfect solution, but-
No.
Okay, so we'll table this for further study.
But can we go ahead and put it on the agenda for next time, Kelly?
Yeah, is it?
Not let it, not let it slip away?
One thing, the idea the attorney brought up is, with the commission's approval, we could maybe close that street one day, see where, what happens to the traffic, see if it creates any other problems.
Just temporarily block it, see where the cars go.
Put some barricades out there?
That way we, we'd see.
Yeah, they might go right through them.
Just see where the flow goes.
We, we need the commission to approve that.
It may create a problem for 13th Street.
But it might not. It might not be as bad as we think it is.
I think it would be worth an experiment.
Yeah.
That's what I was wondering, which side do you want? It's a short one, they could still get around.
That's a good idea. I mean, research it. I mean, if you need to close it, I mean, there's, research it.
Okay. Okay. Reports, item N, sales tax reports, sales tax receipts, and then also cash flow of special use sales tax. Commissioners have had those in their packet, and you've reviewed them. Anything you'd like to point out, Jen, from closing out the year, to you've seen any trends or anything that we need to be aware of?
No, I mean, I think 2015 finished strong. It's a little bit higher than 2013, and we kind of tend to discount 2014 as a comparison year because of the pipeline being here. However, 2016 has started off a little slow, so this will be my, my pitch for shop local and shop a lot. Because we do not want to see those tax dollars go down.
Wouldn't February's receipts reflect Christmas? Isn't it, isn't it like 60 days behind?
I'll be honest, I'm not 100% sure on that. That looks, it looks correct on there.
Because if you look at the history across there, except for a few months, it's, so it might, you know, one month. That'd make a trend.
Right, one month. I mean, we're not going to go change our budget projections yet, but just a-
Okay. Any questions on either of those reports?
Yeah.
Next item, item P, report on inaugural first Saturday recycling event held on February 6th.
We had our first recycling collection last Saturday, and we had 105 cars come through. It's pretty much a steady stream for, from 8 to 12.
Manageable?
Yep, real manageable. And we took the trailer to Fredonia today. Of course, we waited before we left and waited when we come back. We had 3,520 pounds of paper, cardboard, and glass, and 2,240 pounds of e-waste.
What was that number, Mike?
3,520 of paper, cardboard, and glass, and 2,240 pounds of e-waste.
Wow.
Yeah.
That surprises me.
Yep, that's, you know, close to four ton, or three ton.
So that 3,520 actually comes off what you take to the dump?
Right, right.
So we'd actually save that cost?
Yes.
Sounds like-
And landfill cost, right?
There's maybe a quarter of a trailer left, but we're going to put it on the trailer and take it up next time.
Sounds like people have been storing up their e-waste until this event.
Yeah, it kind of looked like it.
It seems like a huge amount.
Yeah, but it was a good turnout.
How many city staff did we have there?
Four, I think. Four, and, four, and then Lisa and April were there.
I'd like to know sometime how much this is going to cost us, with the time of the city staff there and the gas and everything. Just sometime when you get a minute, I'd love to know that.
Okay.
Like a projected budget?
Just curious. I don't, I don't know if it's significant or not, but if somebody asks me, I'd like to know.
And I had somebody that was interested in like a dumpster. They'd said, you know, like for a pickup load of trash, they'd be willing to pay 20, 25 dollars to do some remodeling, you know, working on a home project, construction debris. So that might be something, eventually look at kind of offsetting, bring in a little revenue. You know, if you've got a small project, it's kind of, it's better than throwing it on a county road.
Yeah.
Not that I've done that.
Those dumpsters are not cheap.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Item Q, report on thank-you note for commissioners and city manager for completion of West Maine from the First Presbyterian Church.
Don't think we need to discuss that. It's nice.
Appreciate their-
Yeah, that's nice to-
Acknowledgement for, I'm glad they're enjoying the road.
We're getting a lot less claims filed for tires.
But no more paid.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's nice. It's nice.
Okay, next, commissioner comments. No, wait, extra item. Extra item dealing with the-
Photo shootout.
Photo shootout. Do you want to just scroll those?
Yeah, this is entry 161 by Rob Morgan. Entry 162 by John Koshen, who was here. Entry 163 by Rob Morgan. 164 by Rob Morgan. 165 by Rob Morgan. 166 by Rob Morgan. 166 by Rob Morgan. And 167 by Rob Morgan.
Those are all the entries?
That's it.
And we need to get it in right away, right?
Well, we need, I'm concerned that they're gonna fill the 64 slots and rule this out. I checked with the league, and they said it's filling up, but they said what they thought would be okay, so I'd like to submit it tomorrow morning.
Is there any reason for us to make the decision? We have no taste at all.
Did we make that? We didn't, did we make that?
Well, last year, we had like 50, so it was a little, little less manageable for you to do at a meeting, so we had a committee that made a recommendation. I'll give you a recommendation if you will.
Yeah, Rob Morgan, we submitted his last year.
We submitted one of his, not one of these.
I know, one of his.
But yeah, it was one of his pictures.
I love them all.
See, they're all really good.
I think the biplanes are pretty amazing.
Did you say you had a recommendation?
I would recommend this picture.
The biplane?
Yes, because that's the start of the Veteran's Day Parade also, that was held, I believe, on June 21st.
22nd?
22nd.
I think so.
And, uh, before the medallion ceremony at Memorial Hall, and, you know, it's got some flags there, it has the Infinitus banners, and it kind of had the story behind it. But that's just my opinion.
Can I see that first one once more?
Yes.
That's pretty amazing, too.
It is.
You guys want to pick, or make our staff pick?
Either, either one of those two would be, it's fine.
Yeah.
Fine with me, those are the two that I'm most concerned, that's...
I think the biplanes is pretty cool.
Yeah, the biplanes, one that caught my eye.
The action, it's amazing that he caught that.
That's a really good. And that was neat that day, that was, that was really cool.
Leonard, what about it?
Yeah, that's, that's fun.
Go with the, the biplane one?
Yeah.
We gotta work at getting votes to do it, right?
Yeah.
If it turns out to be a bad choice, we can blame it on Kelly.
Because that was your recommended. I'm good with that one.
Okay.
Yep. Get on it.
Okay, great. Then give us the information so we can...
Yeah, when it starts.
Vote?
Yeah.
Felt like we did last year.
Start pestering all your friends, so that they will vote.
Okay.
If you're not on Facebook, you need to sign up just for this contest, and then you can...
Get off.
Go off it, too.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner comments?
I'm good.
I heard just secondhand that we had drilled into the bank's basement, trying to put a sign over there. Yes, we did. Putting up those no-parking signs, we...
Yeah.
Put a hole in it. We have, uh, we, uh, repaired it, and I think it's to the bank's satisfaction. I've asked Julie, I saw her this week, and she said she was waiting for Jim to come back and check it, and I haven't heard from Jim's Kelly, so I'm assuming it's to their satisfaction. So the basement goes out under the sidewalk, so we... Yes, it comes out clear almost to the curb. Uh, we're gonna have to put a plate down to get a, to put up a sign, put a plate. Wow. Also, as from information that we received today, notification from KDOT that we did get our, our K-WAS upgrade, up to $90,000 grant for upgrade of that system at the terminal, so that's good news. That's the only thing I had on, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I guess it won't leak unless it rains.
I would just like to, in this moment, extend to the invitation for the 2016 Leadership Summit from the League of Kansas Municipalities and the Kansas Mayor's Association. It's gonna be held on April 22nd and 23rd, and if any of you are interested, I'll be happy to make those arrangements. And it will be in Junction City, Kansas.
Okay.
22nd and 23rd, Monday and Tuesday?
Yep, April 22nd and 23rd.
That's not correct.
Is that April?
No.
It'll be in April.
It's a Friday and a Saturday.
Yeah.
Look at the February.
22nd and 23rd.
When we got our, our last bond for the milling and overlay, the engineer's estimate was 600,000, and we bonded for 600,000, and it came in around 300. We were gonna check with the bond attorney to see about the, the extra funds, if it had to be earmarked a certain way, or if we could spend it, or what, you know, if they ever got back with you on that.
I don't know.
I don't know. Uh, we'll, we'll check on that.
Check on, okay.
I don't know what we did.
The terminal and the restroom grant, where are we on the, the design or the restroom renovation? Have they come back with anything else for us?
No, I'm gonna have to get with them and have them redo it and, uh, get it more economically feasible.
Yeah, okay. Then, the league was working on some job descriptions. Did they ever get that completed for us?
We got those completed.
Well, Michael Cox was doing that, and he left the league. He sent me his latest revision, but we haven't pushed those out to the staff yet, but we have the latest revision that he did before he left.
Yeah, okay, because I know we, I think that was a, a paying thing, and we paid...
Yeah, we paid them.
For them, and, uh, I knew there was some holdup with the league getting them to you, so just follow through. Okay. Next item is executive session for non-elected personnel. The commissioners, city manager, and city attorney will enter into the executive session for...
How long?
20, 15 minutes.
15 minutes. So we'll be back in session. I've got 7:40, but is this the watch that's wrong?
Yeah, it's 7:27.
Yeah, it'll be 7:42.
7:42. We'll be back in session at 7:42.
Can we take a little bit of time to...
Stretch? Take a 10-minute break?
Go to, no, just a minute or two to go to the bathroom.
Then...
Be kind of important.
How about 7:40?
So return at 7:45.
7:45.
All right. Too much water.
Need a motion, or?